I call to order the Gladstone City Council Work Session for June 28, 2022 at 5:30 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person in our council chambers, as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally, and public comment is not a part of our agenda and is not allowed. Attendees will not be able to speak during this work session. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience, nor business from the council. We have two items on our agenda this evening. First is emergency management education for elected officials. And second is an update on the American Recovery Plan Act, which is also referred to as ARPA funds. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the flag sleuth? Thank you. The first item is number one. Police Chief John Schmerber, Community Services Manager Tiffany Kirkpatrick, and Clackamas Fire District Number One Division Chief Rick Huffman will present information on the role of elected officials during an emergency. And without further ado, I think I will go ahead and hand it over to our police chief to start the presentation.
Good evening, counsel, mayor. First, first off, we want to get started with, there's been lots of conversations over the last probably year about our Emergency Operations Center, how we operate under emergency conditions and so on. A lot of conversations that we've had regarding Resource Center. And so I think today we want to walk you through our experiences of what, what we believe needs to occur in conversations, not only with community members, but, but council as well, as what Gladstone will look like when we have another emergency. It's not if, it's probably when, right? There'll be another ice storm, there'll be another, you know, hopefully not, but wildfires or some other, other natural event, or even a water boil event that we need to address. So I'm going to turn it over right now to, to Chief Huffman.
Sorry, we're ready.
Ready? And let him go ahead and take over.
Sure. Evening, counsel, mayor. It's good to be back. As Chief Schmerber said, we just want to review the last couple of years since we both were hired here and discuss the lessons learned and what worked and maybe what we need to do a little better in the future. So just to start out, where it all began, in May of 2019, you hired two new chiefs. We actually discussed things right away during the interview process and ended up working together. And, and I can tell you, that's part of this, it's not written down in this presentation, that collaboration, relationships between department heads is very important for managing citywide emergencies or disasters. And I didn't really talk to you about this, but it is, I think one of the reasons we were successful is because of the department heads under the leadership of the city administrator that we're able to manage a lot of the issues that came up. So, but it all began right after we were hired, we had a boil water advisory. And even though that wasn't what you'd call a disaster, the impact of that was a theme through all of the things that happened for the two years that followed. So in a nutshell, immediately following our hiring and becoming the new chiefs at Gladstone, we had this boil water notice and really brought up the awareness for good exchange of information, not just between department heads, but community-wide and with the elected officials, all of you. The two years that followed had additional challenge that proved this, but also kind of supported some other things. Obviously, COVID-19, the pandemic, was something that I don't think anybody was ready for, for the scope and scale of what it did to all of us. You know, personally, and I've been through incident management teams where we dealt with endemics and pandemics before. And even I didn't really was ready for the scope of this. But the impacts and lessons learned for this were that constant information was needed, clarification on compliance, you know, things like vaccination support, citywide impacts like closure of city services, coordinating with Oregon Health Authority, the CDC, and all the other agencies in the county. And shoot, trying to track the information down was one of the information challenges. But the biggest one was compiling that and giving it back to you so we could act on it and still function. So that was probably one of the key things in that scale of an emergency. The coordination between Fire PD and Public Works, I think, was handled really well with our department head meetings, but we had the same challenges internally, trying to figure out what was the latest, what applied, and how do we enact it to still keep our businesses going, city business going? Probably on a different level, more of a disaster-wide impact. And this, the 2020 firestorm really gave us the, the impact of evacuations and immediate need, panic, the need for immediate information like, and misinformation. You know, what evacuation zone were we in? You know, our city was actually in two different evacuation zones. How do we handle that when people call and say, are we evacuating? Is that what they said? We had to coordinate our information at, between the county and the state level, in addition to just locally here in the city. So clarification on those fire conditions and evacuation notices was, was key information that we had to take on the fly. And this was a really good example of misinformation on social media. You know, oh, the fires are burning here and there, the smoke is doing this, and we were told to evacuate, and maybe those weren't accurate. And so to vet all that information and scrub it and get it back to you as elected officials and the public was pretty challenging. I have to give a shout out to the, the police side and the volunteers that helped with PIO messaging. We couldn't have done it without them, so. Right on the heels of that, we had the ice storm of 2021, which put another layer of disaster impacts on Gladstone. I think the average was nine days without power, but somewhere without two weeks or more. The constant information need with no power was another challenge. Without power came with other services, internet. And some people didn't even have radios. So that, that was another level of information challenge. Knowing the road closures, you know, having the fatalities within the city because of maybe the information, lack of using generators in your house or doing things like that, safety messaging both ways was, was really needed. The other one was warming shelters. And that, that has hit us for every hot and cold incident that we've had. So, and then right on the heels of that, last almost a year today, I think, was the unprecedented heat with a historic heat wave that we had. Unfortunately, we also had fatalities from that in the city. So the, the shut-ins in the elderly and how we deal with that kind of layer of communication was brought up specifically in this. Coordination with the county specifically on cooling shelters is something. You know, we definitely want to take care of our own community, but we have to collaborate with the county and emergency management and disaster management. But we also don't want a flood of people coming in and overwhelming our own shelter. So those are all concerns that we had and we had to deal with. And to summarize, before I turn it over back to the police chief, was this necessarily didn't have disaster or emergency impacts on the city, but there was emergency management impacts when we had protests, public display of opinion, and those type of things. So what that really solidified was our multi-agency coordination within the, the police department, between police, fire, and department heads. So these are all lessons learned about communication. Some of them went really well, some of them need help. But in the end, what happens is that information comes into the Emergency Operations Center. We, we digest that information, decide to act on it on an operational level and on an informational level to be shared to the city administrator for you. And then the Resource Center is what the police chief will talk about, is, is the end goal here from all these lessons learned. Gladstone needs a single point of reference that community members know that, hey, if something goes wrong, I turn to the Resource Center, which is the senior center. And I, oh, I need information, oh, I have a question. If something is going wrong, we should have that focal point, whether we have services or not. So that'll help, I think, in many circumstances. So in summary, the key to successful operations is situational awareness. What does that mean? It means knowing what's going on around us in a timely way. And then how do we share that information through the internal Emergency Operations Center with department heads, city administrator, and ultimately to the elected officials and the public? We also learned a lot on FEMA and state reimbursement with declared disasters. Internally, for operations, there's a lot of things we can do to streamline that. And I think the, the Budget Director would, would second that. When we document operations within the Emergency Operations Center and in the field and able to take those common forms that are FEMA-approved and keep those as records, it really greases the wheels for the bureaucracy of reimbursement. And it's, it's not a very timely thing, but I think we actually went through that in a, in a really professional manner, and we, we heard that from FEMA. It's a big deal. We want to recoup as much cost as we can that for those unbudgeted emergencies. Again, the greatest lesson learned was people want information. They want to know what's going on. They want to, they want security information. They want to know if they're in danger, if they are, what can they do to be safer? They, they want that information. That, the need to have that central location to become a habit, to get that information, is really needed. And that's what the rest of this presentation is about, the senior centers, senior center, senior center.
Good evening, and thank you. For the record, I'm going to go back to this one slide here. I'm not sleeping. I'm actually, I'm actually on a Zoom call, so.
Who's making fun of me?
Yes, yes, yes. So as we talk about the senior center, senior center is the location. It's centrally located, it's a gathering place for a lot of our seniors, a lot of other members of our community also. Tiffany Kirkpatrick, when she was, when we were looking for the community resource manager itself, that position itself, we were looking for this type of person. Not only could they run the senior programs, but they can be a part of the community and run the senior center and turn it into a resource center. And that's a lot of the questions that she got from, from the chief and I. And we've really focused on that. She's done an outstanding job. And she's actually part of this, part of this group because she's going to carry a heavy load, a heavy, heavy load if we get to an emergency situation again. So what's, so really what I want to walk you through right now is how it starts, from, from start to finish of an event, okay? So as you guys are really familiar with the location of the EOC, which Emergency Operations Center is located in the police department training room. So it's, it's, it's generated, we have a generator. So if we lose power, we can, we have electricity. We have power that we can run our computers and everything else that we need to do so we can stay, we can stay active. And the purpose and responsibility of any EOC is oversight of the entire incident and effectively manage the incident. That's the sole purpose of the EOC. Typically, there are longer-term events, like a natural disaster or something that's going to take place over time. Fire and police are different in the, in the aspect of typically fires are longer term. You're typically going to be out there for a minimum, probably of two hours. You're going to see fire trucks out there. Some of law enforcement incidents will be over 15 minutes, right? And then something else will occur. So typically, when we stand up in EOC, it will be here for like a natural disaster, something that's a shorter term will be in the field. But for what we're talking about tonight is, is strictly a longer-term disaster that we're going to open up to EOC and we're going to staff it with, with people. Likely, it's going to be a unified command. That's the way I've always been brought up in emergency operations. So they'll typically be, obviously, the city administrator will be a part of that IC, police, fire, and likely Public Works here. And obviously Tiffany Kirkpatrick, or that position over at the senior center. Direction of city resources, excuse me, will always run through the EOC. There's got to be continuity, there's got to be consistency, and there's got to be clarity on, on that. And it gets back to information, it gets back to being able to share that information. So as, as the next line is, obviously, all internal and external information will run through the EOC. So the messaging is consistent, and that's the key. We want consistent messaging. It was brought up that if, if you want the real-time information and not something that's rumored over social media, look at, look at our sites, look at the information that's coming out. Coordination of volunteer groups such as churches or some of our neighbors helping neighbors, or any other volunteer group will be directed and coordinated through the EOC. And that, that could be pushed out likely to the Resource Center. But that information flow should be circling, and so it should be won. So how does it work? How do we get this started? What we've done in the past, and it's worked very well, is city administration and department heads have a conversation typically as the event's starting to unfold, or if we get wind of the event unfolding, that we can get on a conference call. And we have capabilities, no matter where we're at, we can conference call one another and determine whether we're going to meet. And if it's significant to us, that's when we're going to meet. We're going to meet over at the EOC, typically at the police department in the executive conference room, where we're going to make some decisions. And those sit, the purpose behind that is listed there. We're going to want to identify the severity of the problem and overall goals, which is security and safety of the community. That's our number one goal, security and safety of the community. And determine initial needs for stabilization of the community, determine resources needed to achieve our goals. And then either activate it in EOC, which likely what happened in a major event that we just showed you, stand up the Resource Center, which is where Tiffany comes in. And then the city administrator will brief the elected officials on, on how that goes. So that's typically how it works. I think that's how what, without the, take the Resource Center out of the piece, because this is kind of new. We've talked about it, but this is kind of new. But that's how it's typically worked on the last, on the last events. So Gladstone Resource Center, what is that? Well, it's a senior center. It just gets transitioned to a resource center. And the mission of the Resource Center is this, to provide information to the community of Gladstone during emergency conditions and connect them with essential services. That is the whole mission and goal of the Resource Center. And regardless what happens, regardless of everything's chaos, which it will be, if we just remember that goal and work towards those, towards those goals, we'll be just fine. We will absolutely be fine. But it's also a gathering place for the community, a place to get the updated information. Staging locations, we put on their staging location for potential services. You know, we talked about having to clear roads, neighbors helping neighbors. We may have groups meet there, and we coordinate through there and, and leads there. It could be CERT, it could be a lot of different things. The Resource Center is a, is a location where there's a kitchen, right? For, for community gatherings or any other support to community needs that's dictated. But before something happens at that Resource Center that's outside the parameters of what's already directed, everything gets run through, so we make sure that communication is through. It's not that things get denied through the EOC. It's just to make sure we have all the resources and everybody's on the same page and operating, operating on the same page. But most importantly, we, we've got to remain fluid and flexible during the entire event. We've got to be able to change and turn on the, on the turn of a, you know, depending on the incident. Second later, we may be going a different direction depending on what's going on. And again, our overall mission, if we just remember that, will be in good shape. Responsible of the Resource Center, so this is kind of, just kind of want to give everybody an idea of the signage and, and mapping. So what it would look like when we activate the Resource Center itself, this is what, this is part of, part of Tiffany's responsibilities because she's going to have complete oversight of that Resource Center. She's going to be managing that Resource Center with volunteers. And these, these are a list of everything that she's going to have to start with. And one of the great things about the Resource Center and having the community there is, and I'll, and I'll talk about it again in, in a moment, is we're, we're going to get lots of information from the county. We're going to get lots of internal information from our employees and, you know, on the streets, from fire, police, public works, community members. But there's also going to be different community members coming into the EOC, being able to share problems or concerns they have or needs that they have. And so we're working out and we're transitioning. Well, not only does information come down to the, from the EOC down to the Resource Center, but information from the Resource Center rotates back up. So it's a continuous circle, as you saw, one of the initial ones. So we're making sure, we're trying to make sure we fill gaps and, and not miss anything. Now, there'll always be hiccups. There will always be hiccups. But we're going to try and overcome those. Some of the partners we've been, we've been talking with and working with, to start with, is Gladstone Emergency Management Support GEMS. They've been transitioning from what has been going on in the past here in Gladstone. We recognize the need for communication, the need to get information out, a need for, for groups to, to come to, to get away. During the ice storms, there was, there were several different things going on where the community wanted to gather. Well, they can gather here, and there's, it's a safe place. Or it can be coordinated to a larger area that's safe, that we can, that we can work through. Again, CERT, Community Emergency Response, Gladstone City Volunteers, Police, Fire, and Chaplain Program, and the Gladstone Area Churches. You know, and that, that's where our chaplaincy program ties in to that also. So, and that's huge. But the GEMS group, and a couple of them are sitting behind, Tom and Jim are here, community members, they've stuck with us. They've bought into what we're trying to do, and, and they're all in to support the Resource Center. And I'm very, very grateful and very appreciative of, of those.
Can we just introduce them really quick? So Jim Reynolds is on the left, Jim, and then Tom Hogan's on the right. They're, they're the GEMS gurus.
So let's talk about role of elected officials, too. And although I can sit up here and dictate because of, of my position, but we're not just doing that. We're going to get your opinion, too. So what's the role of elected officials? Start with, the role of elected officials truly in, in these types of events are policy decisions concerning event. You're going to, you'll be briefed by the city administrator, maybe an IC, too. Combination of both, just depends. But the role of elected officials is policy decisions on the event itself. And whether we declare emergencies or not, that has to come from elected officials. You need to receive briefings and updates from the city administration or city administrator and/or incident commander, or both. Participate and engage in community at Resource Center. This is, this is the key. And for elected officials, for what we've heard as a city is the elected officials want to participate and want to engage with the community. The best place to do that would be the Resource Center and to partner with the Resource Center. One thing that we've identified at the Resource Center is really we need to identify who the volunteers are in the Resource Center. And one way of doing that is we've, we've made vests. And for those that don't know, FOGNAP also has some volunteer stuff, but it has the city logo on it, and it has volunteer on the back, it's a safety vest. And we've made lanyards. And we've made lanyards for, for them so they can be truly identifiable and, and so on. And so if, if you're going to go down there and want to engage and you want people to know that, that some have never met the council or, or met somebody, a volunteer, they'll have this information. The council could have this information, or be wearing these, too, with, with name tags or whatever, with regards to council. There's, the sky's the limits on what you guys want to look like or how you want to do that. But to engage the community, I think, is important with that. And so that's kind of it, but you'd have to go to like a couple of different places. So if, if you're down at the Resource Center, we'll set briefing times. The Resource Center will also have briefing times for the community, or EOC will come down and give up-to-date briefings and other partners such as PGE if they're needed, or somebody else, some other group that's needed to give updates on power or, or water or, or just public safety messages in general. We'll be down there, those, those will be scheduled. That's kind of in the weeds of what we do. But what I say that is, if you're down at the Resource Center, it might be briefing times up, up here at the EOC that you'll need to attend to, to get your briefings. So that's kind of what we've heard and what we've seen for the role of, of elected officials. But now the next question is, the question's for you is, what does that look like for you counselors and mayor? What, what does that look like for you? What are we missing on this? And so that's, I guess I pose that question to you guys. Is there something else out there that we haven't thought of?
All right. Well, I'll start with Counselor Ripley. Any questions or comments? Counselor Alexander?
Now, I've been in those meetings. I think we covered pretty good every meeting. You know, I think we got it all, all dialed in.
Counselor Hartman?
Thank you for the presentation. This was really great. I think the communication, like you said, was the big thing. I think, yeah, this seems great, the role of elected officials. You know me, I'm going to get out there and do community. I had one question, not related to this, but I think a lot of the question, one of the main questions that I got besides like communication was why it took so long to declare a state of emergency and like what we need to do to make that go faster during the ice storms. You know, because it took about a week, and it seemed like everyone forgot about Gladstone, that we were out without power for seven days and what we can do to, you know, maybe advocate for that to be sooner. That was just a question that I received.
Yeah, I, I can, I'll, I'll touch and let the chief. I think the, what we experienced here in Gladstone seemed to be on a frequent basis. It was, it was kind of a learning, learning for all of us. You know, there were, there were hiccups, there were steps that, okay, maybe we should look at this and look at that. But we learned from different events, unfortunately. And then this is one area we learned, but go ahead.
I'll let the city administrator go with details, but part of the, the impacts, where we were already under one declaration. And so we review that to make sure what is crossover. Obviously, many of those things were not. And at the same time, we're under a county and state declaration. So we were navigating what the impacts of that were. And when you have a county or statewide disaster, that's really a long-term action. And sometimes it's a, it's a mechanism to ignite, so you can get resources. But usually, it's within, I think the safe timeline is a 72-hour period to, to look at enacting those, those measures. And it might take time to do it after that. But really, declarations are about enacting certain ordinances, allowing certain procedures and maybe closures to take effect, resources and recouping of funding. So as far as operationally, those are immediate coordinations we do right away. We work with the local, regional, and state EOCs on emergency needs. Then that 72-hour period is when it really starts getting stretched thin and where we want more things. And that's where declarations help on how you get those things. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
Nope, that's accurate.
Thank you. That was all.
Counselor Todd? I know that we're going to have to build the habit of when you want information, this is where, you know, the community's going to go. How are we going to build that habit while we're not in the middle of a crisis?
That's, that's really going to have to be a kind of a marketing campaign. And, and that's, that's kind of what we do through social media, through conversation, through flyers at the senior center. So we haven't got to that point yet. But, you know, the key was getting this up, getting this ready as, if an emergency comes today, we can flip that switch and make that happen, right? But I understand what you're saying. How do we get that to be that common gathering place? And we're just going to have to word of mouth, share that information.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be in a, like, in a crisis and then trying to tell people that that's where they need to go.
Hello. I want to just say that we've already started the process of doing education and outreach to people about the center. So about the center being a resource center. The social media, some hit and misses on the newsletter, but there'll be a more standard area to look and see. But I just want to start talking about GEMS and really pushing GEMS and having people understand what that group does. We, within the group, have started to talk about some educational programs that we can offer, some very practical trainings. And we have a schedule to do that with the public. So in every meeting, they will know that this is the group, this is the place. And in the newsletter, they will see that this is the group, and oh, this is where the place is. So it does take time, and we've already started that in, in small ways. But like in December, when we had the But like in December, when we had the, it was like a day, I think it was ice, a sheet of ice or something. You know, we put things on social media and again, not everybody accesses it, but both social media and, and walking into the center and just finding out and talking about that on a regular basis with the newsletter. So I think gems is the way in though, the education piece and the training, because people want that. They want a CPR first aid, they want preparedness classes, they want tangible things that they might need at the house. So we're working on that in our group and it's definitely a goal.
Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to add a couple of things that, and Tiffany is correct, you know, we, this is a big topic for gems and volunteer groups. Part of the other communication that was a little lacking is for shut-ins and maybe different language barriers to be breached. So we discussed with gems and the senior center of flyers with the meal deliveries and, and looking at different languages too, so we can do that. Definitely that is the hot topic with non-emergent operations with gems is to get the information out there. It will take time.
And I just had a couple more questions. When is the reader board going to launch and what will that look like? We don't get it.
No, we're, we're just not there yet. You know, we looked at different options and we're just not there yet. So right now we're in the improv two A-frames with signage and, and other, other methods of communication. So it hasn't been lost, but it's, we're just not there yet.
Okay. And if I could add, it really comes down to the Gladstone's municipal sign code. And for us to get the kind of reader board that we want to get, we would have to go through a comprehensive audit of the sign code, which would involve the entire community to participate in that. So it wouldn't only allow a reader board at the senior center, it would open it up citywide for any type of business to have that. And so really, that's just a nice way of saying that our sign code is out of compliance. So we're trying to work within the parameters of what we can get for that.
Okay. That's funny because I'm like, well, maybe we know somebody who we can talk to about that. But has gems launched their social media sites and website yet? I know that that was getting worked on. And last I checked, there wasn't that much. There was a page, but nothing. Anyone?
Yeah, no. The answer to that question is no. So it's, it's, it's hard when we're, when city information is being pushed out. It's hard to be pushed out onto a private site.
Yeah.
And so there needs to be some control in that. So we're kind of looking, looking away from that more and, and trying to attach it to different pages and so on, excuse me, different pages and so on. So that likely will not come to fruition, but it hasn't been rolled completely off the table, but we're not moving in that direction.
I think that's it for now.
Counsel Garlington?
I just have a couple of questions. Who is the second at the Resource Center? Should Tiffany be, should the Resource Center Director be not available during an emergency? Who is the second? Who's going to open up that building? Who's going to turn on the heat and things like that?
I will be available, even if I have to bring my daughter in. But yeah, that's a great question. And I, I'm going to let Chief actually answer that before I.
I can answer that. So the answer to your question is there's backups down there at the, at the Resource Center that we can, that we can call on if needed. Or any one of the, well, the department has, whether it's public works, police or the city administrator, we have access into there, that we can get it open. If we need to get it open, it will get open. And then we'll get the resources down there that we need. So.
Okay.
Does that, I, I don't know if I.
It answers my question. I just like a definitive person. I mean, like this is in your job description that you are second to open up this building should the first not be available.
I don't see how. I don't want to say anything that's going to really lock me in, but I don't see how it won't get open. There's plenty of people here that can open up that Resource Center.
Okay.
I, and I would expect Tiffany would be available for that.
Only because I was out of town when the ice storm hit and it took us four days to get back. So.
And I was going to support the chief's statement with that because, because of that reason, we discussed this and it's more about a process. So police, public works, or even the fire station has access to that building.
Okay.
And so that's how we can get it open right away and then staffing up as we can. That's the plan.
Yeah, it's, it's not in their job title. Like, I mean, I like that you made that, you know, obvious there, but it is expected that, you know, if I contact my staff, that they would open the center. They all have access to everything that would be public for people. So.
Okay.
But you're right, a definitive person that is. So that's why we asked that you share questions so we can discuss that.
So is there a way to learn about gems without, and I don't mean to say, sound like I'm not a, I'm not a participant, without joining. Not that I wouldn't want to join, but it's kind of like I say to people all the time, don't say yes to something unless you've got, you know, time to do that, which I've discovered that my calendar is so full that I don't anymore. But I would like to know how that operates without having to be a go-to person.
I think, I think Tiffany really touched on that earlier with the classes at the Senior Center that are going on, whether it's preparedness, whether it's CPR, it's something that Tom and Jim will be there teaching and coordinating. So information you can get from the Resource Center. So there's, there's, there will be areas that you can learn about gems or learn about preparedness. You can probably get some of that information at the community festival at, at the booth. So there's lots of ways to get that information. And to do that, if it's just flyers or whatever, they can reach out to the city and we can coordinate getting information out to them about their awareness. So, but I think the, the, the classes themselves, their participation and just getting to the Senior Center itself should take care of it.
Okay.
Are the gems meetings recorded at all? Audio or video?
No.
They're not? Should we be doing that?
They are not a city committee, so it would, that would be something outside that the city would require to do for gems.
Okay.
Well, I guess one of the things that I would say that might be something that gems could think about doing is YouTube videos. You know, showing people what would happen, how to prepare. How, this is where we're going, this is what could happen. Just small, three-minute informational things. I think that would be something that people would take the time, you know, to watch because it says Gladstone, Oregon. You click on it and say, oh, I'll watch that for three minutes.
Like a link maybe, since we're not going to do the website thing, a separation from the city, but a link that maybe could be clicked on.
Right.
With like a three minute. I like that idea.
Let me show you how to pack your emergency box.
Because we might have somebody on gems that, that wants to take that role on or take turns because we're talking about how to reach people with the education piece. Besides coming into the center and going to a training, they could click on that and get a tip.
And learn a lot, you know, on their own time. And, and learn more by just seeing it, which is sometimes better for some people. So that's just a thought out there. That's it.
Thank you.
And that was a great presentation.
Yeah, it was great.
So when I first became mayor, I think one of the first formal classes I took was put on by Clackamas County and it was on emergency preparedness and the roles of elected officials. I don't know if they still offer that class, but I highly recommend it. And there's also a FEMA online course on emergencies and the roles of elected officials. So I didn't think I would need it, but we've needed it over and over and over again. And it really did come in handy. So I definitely recommend it. Greg, you had something else?
Yeah, to answer Counsel Todd's question about how we get in the habit of this. We talked at the last meeting, I don't know where we went with that member, about putting something in the newsletter or the water bill. So everybody in the city got it, knew the resource center and that, we did that a few months and people would see it, go, okay, I know the resource center, I know the resource. So did that ever go anywhere?
I haven't put in, I haven't directed or created any document quite yet.
All right, okay.
Yeah, we got one for fireworks, one got sent out for fireworks, but we haven't created that.
Okay, so we talked about it, right? Let everyone know, be the resource center and water bill, everyone would get it in town and after seeing it.
Right, we talked about that. I, I think we're going to have a list of ways to, to do some outreach on the center. And that's one of the ways. And I think we just discussed it. So we'll have to move it further on up because that's an area that's really easy for us to do. I think a lot of people don't open their mail anymore, but it'll reach some, some.
I have digital.
Everything's online. So, but yeah.
Yes, just a suggestion, maybe a flyer or something to put out in the beginning of school packets at Gladstone High School, JWE and all this stuff. They start school on August 30th and we all get these paper packets with all of the things. And so could be a way to have a little notice that goes out. Every parent will read it. And then we can put it in the different Spanish and Russian languages that they typically do as well.
All right, anything else from council? I don't see anything. Anything else, else from staff? Nope, but you guys knocked it out of the ballpark. I've said this before. I've had so many people comment how well we handled emergencies. And I, I didn't say that we weren't prepared. I said, oh, we practice this all the time.
Yeah.
We got this down.
Gladstone is, is poised compared to other cities our size. We are very well prepared for an emergency. And I think a lot of it too is encouraging people to take personal responsibility in their own preparedness because government can only do so much
Yeah.
in the time of a crisis. But yes, we should be very proud of how our management is during emergencies. And the other thing is that we could have done this update to you in the winter or after a crisis, but we wanted to show you that it's something that we work on year round. In the summertime, on a nice hot day, when there's no emergencies, this is still part of who we are at Gladstone.
Yeah, everyone's, oh, it'll happen tomorrow. I'll do that tomorrow. I'll do that next week. No, you got to do it today. All right. Thank you very much. And if there's anything you guys need from us and to, to be proactive in this, let me know. All right, thank you.
Administrator Bets, do we have a city YouTube page that people can subscribe to?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Don't we put our city councils?
Yeah, all of our council meetings have to go through YouTube, but I don't think anybody has to subscribe to those.
You don't have to, but you can subscribe to them. So like you can subscribe us. So if we updated with a three-minute video, then you would get an alert and say, oh, Gladstone, you know, did this thing.
Right, but don't you do that when you're watching the YouTube video? It says you can subscribe to this?
Well, I just didn't know if there was an actual.
You subscribe ahead of time.
Thank you.
Just hit a button that says subscribe.
Thank you, Parker. So we, we do have a page that you could subscribe because like Clackamas County is, you know, hashtag Clackco or whatever. So what's ours?
We don't have a hashtag.
Well.
It just says Gladstone, Oregon.
Okay, Gladstone, Oregon. Okay, because.
Comma, Oregon.
Okay, because, because.
Getting this subscription.
You hit the subscribe button.
Yeah, because Clackamas County just did a whole thing on Tuck Willa and they tagged Gladstone in it, but it was Gladstone, Missouri.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item is number two, update on the American Recovery Plan Act funds, which is also referred to as ARPA staff. So thank you, Mayor City Council. Really, this is just an update to let the city council know that we are managing our money well and we're being good stewards. As you recall, back in September of 2021, the staff provided the city council a presentation on how we should spend our funds. Just to remind the public briefly, is that the city of Gladstone's distribution is It will be distributed in two lump sum payments. We've received the first one and the second one will come in 2022. And the funds need to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and spent by December 31st of 2026. As you'll see in the short summary, we have followed the guidance that we received from the city council. There's a few areas in here where they are in red font and that is just to provide you an update. Today, I actually was able to get some more information on one that is not in red font. And that has to do with the Gladstone Business Relief Assistance Program. When we originally talked about this, we were looking for a partner because Gladstone does not have its own chamber. It doesn't have economic development. So we looked to our neighbors, the North Clackamas Chamber and Oregon City Chamber. And we're working with them to determine if the city was to allocate $100,000 to Gladstone businesses, could they administer that program for us? So today we received an updated letter that I'm going to hand out. So basically, this is a draft letter from the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce that is going to be sent out to all of the Gladstone business owners in July. We're going through our Excel sheet with Oregon City to make sure we have all the current contact information with those that we have business licenses for. So Oregon City is interested in administering the funds for Gladstone and also providing what's called a business recovery service to all of the businesses in Gladstone. What took so long to this point was working through the Department of Administrative Services, which is with the state of Oregon, to make sure that Oregon City's chamber does qualify to administer funds on behalf of Gladstone. So today we found out that that can move forward. They're going to get me a draft contract mid-July and then it will need to come to city council for approval, much like the contract that you did when we have our assistance for St. Vincent de Paul's. Same kind of concept for that. So what they're looking at proceeding with is a small grant program. I don't have details on that yet because we're still trying to determine what the actual need is for the Gladstone businesses before we just offer out monies for that. And then also to help with the business recovery services because we're learning that Clackamas County has hundreds of thousands of dollars, as does Gladstone, Oregon City, Milwaukee. And you can, I will say, double dip. So you can get funds from Clackamas County and Gladstone as well. And so we're trying to get all of those resources in a recovery center so people can do a one-stop shop and know where to apply for those funds. So I think that it's important that even though we haven't spent any of our $100,000 from the ARPA, that we continue down that path. I will say that other municipalities also have not spent theirs yet because they're really trying to identify what that need is going to be for the businesses to do that. So that is one of the updates that I wanted to provide you. The other one is obviously a few meetings ago, we allocated $1.21 million towards our infrastructure, which is going to really help the private and the public infrastructure projects that we're working on. In regards to emergency preparedness, originally we had talked about allocating $50,000. With the new information that we provided tonight regarding the reader board, we were estimating that the bigger, the grander board that we wanted to get would have cost more. Since that time, our police chief has also been doing a pilot program for body cameras. And they've had three different vendors that they've been working on. I've kept the city council appraised of that for the last several months. And we are ready to move forward on implementing a policy and to purchase body cameras. So what we're suggesting is that we take that $50,000 and still have $25,000 allocated towards the Resource Center, but also to spend $25,000 on the police body cameras. That will come before the city council at your July 12th city council meeting. So we'll have more information on that. We also are using some of our money to hire a grant writer so that we can help leverage our ability to get more funds to help us with the programs that we're working on. We also had IT. We also had IT equipment enhancements, because we're required to have both Zoom and in-person meetings. There is some equipment that we needed to purchase in order to make that more conducive here. Specifically, what I can share with you is that the current setup uses the camera placed in the back of the room, and it's lower quality. The new setup will use the camera mounted here in the middle of the ceiling, which is higher quality, and will have presets available. We're also gonna extend the microphone's goose neck length, so that you can hear better on Zoom. And I have a whole list of hardware that I don't know what it is, but I can tell you that the intent is to make it more user-friendly and easier to understand if you're watching and listening on Zoom, and also participating here. So we allocated $15,000 to have those enhancements done in here. The other updates in here, you will see an essential employee one-time recognition pay. And this will offset the highest inflationary index in four decades that has resulted in a high-cost-of-living adjustment. The city council is aware of this, and right now, we've estimated to allocate between $175,210,000 for this using ARPA funds, which is allowed use for essential worker pay. The last update is that there was some conversations regarding childcare, not just in Gladstone, but in Clackamas County. And again, us being good stewards of our money, we are looking to an organization that is already well-established and working on this. I sent you an update from Childcare for All in Clackamas County, and provided you a scope of work that they are working on right now. Currently, they have a formation of a task force that spans private, public, and nonprofit sectors. They are contracting with a consultant to facilitate ongoing task force meetings. They're creating four subgroups that focus on finance and strategy, infrastructure and expansion, policy and program development, and workforce development. They're also developing a website to highlight the issues and document successes and engage public. I have found this to be a very comprehensive working task force. And if I was to recommend that the city allocate funds towards this project, it would be $5,000 for them to continue on with this. And I think that the city of Gladstone could be a good partner with helping promote what they're trying to achieve for finding childcare in Gladstone and Clackamas County. So those are the updates that we have. One update I was gonna have our finance consultant provide you is the amount of money that St. Vincent de Paul has spent, and that we have allocated to them.
Okay, in a nutshell, we have $100,000 allocated to them, and we have spent $30,000 to date. So it slowed down significantly because of the requirements, COVID-related need, et cetera. So as, you know, the economy kind of pulls back into shape or whatever, then, as I say, the requests are slowing down somewhat, but that's where we are today.
So the $100,000 that's on this list, that's an additional $100,000 on top of the amount that we already have in their fund?
No, not exactly, Mayor. We had originally allocated $100,000 out of the CARES funding.
Right.
When that grant ended, that pot was.
Was empty, so we used all of that, okay.
Basically, yes.
Okay.
So we did not move money over from there to this. This is a new addition, of which $30,000 has been spent.
Can you remind me again what people can apply, what's, what can you use that money for? What are people applying for that fund for?
That can be used for utilities of any type, whether it be electricity, water, et cetera, gas, anything that they are running behind on. It can be used for food boxes. The St. Vincent de Paul does hand out food boxes. And it can also be used for rent assistance, rent or mortgage assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll start with you, Councilor Garland, any other questions? On any of it?
Okay, I just. Yes, I have a couple of questions. One of the things that we also talked about was doing something tangible that the city of Gladstone residents could see, and I don't see that on this list anywhere. So I'm looking for that conversation. And then the other thing was, I was asked about the childcare. I was talking to someone about it, and they said, well, why not just give $5,000 to somebody so that people can get childcare?
Yeah.
You know, why are we doing the other? So I, I am not one way or the other, I'm just asking for clarification. Why the task force programming and not childcare help itself?
I think it would be difficult, again, for Gladstone to administer that. And I certainly would recommend, if you're going to create a program, it's more than $5,000. But it, again, would be us looking to a partner to do that. If that's what the city council wants to do, we will go back and try to find a partner that can help do that. The city of Gladstone itself can't just pick a family and allocate the money towards that. The task force is, it's more of a comprehensive, and it's a suggestion, but if the majority of you don't want to allocate it towards that, that is fine. But to date, the research that staff's been able to do, that's where we feel like the best option is for that. Regarding tangible projects, that's open for discussion with the city council too. It's not, because it's not on the list, it's we haven't had time to look into that. I think if you do the math in our contingency, there is still about $347,000 remaining. So you don't have to decide that tonight, but maybe be thinking about if there is a tangible project that meets the qualifications that gives staff that guidance to research.
Okay, and I'm not saying that I'm one way or the other on the childcare. I guess just more information, can somebody share what the program is about? That sort of thing.
The city is scheduled to have them come to their August work session.
Okay.
So perhaps we should wait until then, listen to their presentation, and then you guys can talk about it after that time.
That would be great.
And I can add, you know, this is the task force that I've been involved in for the past eight months.
Right.
I think the goal is to have, to be able to provide and subsidize as a county childcare for all. So similar to what Multnomah County did was preschool for all, but what they found was that parents can't just pick up from their jobs, pick up, go to their kid at 9:00 AM, and then pick them up at noon. And so what Clackamas County is doing is kind of going bigger, going home. They want to see how much it's gonna cost for them to subsidize childcare for everyone in this county. And that's what this organization is doing, is putting on these task force and really diving into policy and infrastructure, what cities need to do to rezone, all of the things, similar to what we had that conversation about the church off of, over there, like, so.
Right.
Like, using that as an example, and then also going, like, on the, like, education side of it, making people understand that childcare is a profession. It's not, they're not glorified babysitters. So there is a lot of meat that has gone into this and is still continuing with these four task force groups. And I think that the money is to continue that, you know, that project, so that we can figure out if we can, we can really subsidize this for people in our community.
Okay, well, then I'm really open to hearing what they have to say, because I guess my question is, is $5,000 enough? So there's another layer to that question. So I have a couple more notes on here. The city needs to replenish its shortfall first. Are we, are we replenishing our shortfall because that's what was budgeted, and now we don't have it? But are we even using what we're short of? Follow me?
I do, I do. We are planning on replenishing our shortfall, but this is a situation with some of the revenues, such as the transient lodging tax, because that is a restricted type of revenue, and we have a specific ordinance that governs that. We will definitely replenish that. Some of these others, we have the ability to allocate that amount, but it can be used for other purposes if necessary from the ARPA guidelines that have come through. So, as a finance professional, I hate to use the word shell game, but it is almost as if this is revenue that we have the ability to utilize for another type of expenditure if necessary, as long as it all comes in under the ARPA guidelines.
Okay, because I, I'm gonna, not gonna mince words. I'm gonna push hard to get something tangible done in this city that people can look at and know that that's what we use their funds for. And not just, and I know that the sewers, and I know that all of that stuff needs to be done. But I'm pretty sure we had this discussion on something they can see, something they can feel, something that they can do. And I know that the Parks Board has been working diligently on the park up at Sherwood Forest. And I don't even think they've even thought about where they're gonna get their money from, because I know, as a former park board member, there is no money. But this is, you know, I remember one time when I got a very small check from a relative who had passed away, and my mom said, you know, don't pay bills with that money. Buy something that means something to you that would work. And I kind of feel not all of this. I mean, I understand this is a city and it needs to run. But I also want to give our citizens something that says the ARPA funds didn't just get washed through City Hall, and nobody gets to see what's going on, so.
All I would caution is that we want to be absolutely sure whatever you're talking about is still within the guidelines.
Okay.
Yes, it's not.
So I can throw out about 10 things when we open that conversation, and you can say yea or nay, but I still would like to see something tangible happen with that money that the folks in this city can say that's what we use some of our funds on.
So perhaps for tonight, if the council could come to an agreement on an amount to set aside for a tangible project, that we could talk about what that is at a later time to make sure that we have the information that it qualifies and all of that.
Okay, well, I think with Tammy being on the Parks Board, maybe that's something that they could throw out some things that, you know, we could get behind them quickly on, you know? This is, this is just a once-in-a-lifetime chance, possibly, for this little city. And I'd like to see that happen, you know, so.
Bathrooms and water at the nature park.
I will just pass this on to the.
Right, Councilor Todd.
I bring this all over the place. What are you, what am I supposed to be answering, because now I'm thinking of projects? Okay, I was, I would be interested in giving to the task force for daycare for all, or childcare for all, maybe more than $5,000. I mean, I'd like to sort of know, maybe we wait until we listen to their presentation. That's interesting to me. I don't, I'm curious about what you're thinking of tangible and a dollar amount. Are you saying $50,000? Are you saying $100,000?
I would have thought it would have cost $25,000 to put, you know, something in at Todd Park, but the last time I was listening to Darren, you know, you gotta put zeros behind this stuff anymore.
And so, I have no idea, this is what we have to find, what would it cost? So how much can we do, or what, again, out of these 10 things, what are we comfortable writing a check for and being able to back it up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to listen more, so.
Me too.
Councilor Hartman.
Thank you. I have a question on the Oregon City Chamber. What administrative costs are they going to charge us?
I don't have them yet.
Oh, okay, that's a part of the contract.
Right, and that will be part of the contract.
Okay, okay, and I ask these questions, I was on a team that helped Multnomah County deliver their small business funds. And it's a huge project, and it's awesome that they're taking over Gladstone. Will we have any oversight of whatever formula they come up with to decide how much businesses will be getting?
Yes, we will have a say in what the small grant program is and all of that, yes.
Okay, okay, awesome. And then, I agree, I'm down to have a work session on tangible projects. I, you know, having a read-through, I don't know that, you know, Parks is within the scope of what we can use. You know, it's all like health and safety, it's all, you know, all of this here, obviously, it's great to read, right? But I would love to have that conversation and sort of decide what sort of project we can do, and have just, you know, everyone come with ideas or whatnot. I don't know if I have a dollar amount, you know? Because there are some things that our cities are doing that are, you know, hiring homeless liaisons to work with our police department, or hiring, you know, you know, mental health therapists or community health workers with ARPA funds, like, that stuff's right. Like, I would love to do that, but I don't know how much that, you know, costs. Like, that sort of falls in line with what those ARPA dollars can do. So I don't know if I have a dollar amount that we could say, you know, maybe, I'll just say $300,000, no, I'm just kidding.
The other, the other thing that we have to be cognizant of is it's gotta be sustainable. So all those other cities that are hiring people, it's not sustainable after the ARPA funds are gone. And so we don't want to put ourselves into a position where we're struggling to find the money to continue to pay for what we're doing.
Sure, sure.
That's why projects that qualify is a good use of the funds to do that. But really defining what a tangible project is that qualifies, it's not as easy as it sounds to do.
Right.
But we could have that conversation.
Okay, that was all I had, thank you.
Councilor Alexander.
Okay, and I just might be wrong, but tangible to me, like you say, something the community can see. They can see the reader board, so why didn't we spend a little more money for it and get the nicer one we wanted? And they can see the body cams that the police are wearing. That's not tangible things that we could use this money on safety and resources?
It is. The reader board is what the sign codes allows. We can't get as big of one as what the sign code allows. So we're getting a smaller one within the parameters.
All right.
But, but yes, the infrastructure, from a staff perspective, that's our number-one city council goal. No, it's not sexy, but we felt like that's really where we needed to focus this money on there. That's a tangible project. The body cameras are a tangible project.
That's what I meant, I just, so.
Yes.
Can spend more money on it if you needed to, but I guess it was the code signs that kept us from getting the bigger one then.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was wondering, thanks.
Councilor Ripley.
I think my only thought, on a special project, you got to be real careful with the dollar amount, because if people see us spending money on fun stuff when there's other failures in the city, that makes us look really irresponsible. We need to figure out where that balance is. That's my only thought.
Okay, I have a question on Gladstone Utility and Housing Assistance for Residents. So you said it's slowing down, we only have $30,000 that has been asked for. How can we justify this COVID response when nothing's shut down? That's what I'm wondering, is nothing's shut down, we're not having to wear masks, people aren't as impacted, I would assume, with COVID restrictions now as they were when we first did the first $100,000.
Right.
So why are we continuing to do this type of payments, I guess?
This was the allocation that was originally determined, you know, when we received the ARPA funds. As far as changing that, that can certainly be.
I'm just wondering how long we need to do the COVID stuff. Why don't we call it something else, just utility assistance, rental assistance, instead of tying it back to COVID?
It's the applicate, or the allowability under the ARPA regulations.
Okay.
Yes, that's a lot of it. It's got to be something that is allowed under ARPA regulations. COVID assistance was one.
Okay, then the police body cameras, I guess we're gonna be talking about that maybe later. How is that an ARPA? I looked through this, and I didn't really find anything that would qualify that as an ARPA.
I believe as far as, somewhat under emergency services, and then, I'm sorry, the words have been to me right now, but just as far as, you know, protection of the public, safety, thank you, sir.
Mayor, I would recommend with the Gladstone Utility and Housing Assistance, we are only allocating at $10,000 month increments.
Okay.
And that we watch for at least till the fall. And that we watch for at least till the fall to see if nobody is still applying for that. We could reallocate the remainder of that fund to something else.
Okay.
But I would say at least getting through the summer months and the fall. Um, and I would recommend if we do the business relief, that we don't just give the hundred thousand dollars. We do it in increments to make sure that they're spending it before we give it to them.
Because the impacts for businesses are different than they were, cuz now it's they can't find anybody to work. It's not necessarily, oh, my gosh, we're shut down because of COVID, so we can't find workers.
Labor shortage.
Labor shortage. So it's a different kind of impact, and I'm just kind of concerned that we're going down this slippery gray slope um, that, that's gonna bite us afterwards.
Well, as, as, uh, Jackie has listed in here, commitment must be made by December of twenty twenty-four. So obviously, we have that point in time.
Yeah.
We have to have our allocations in place, but we do have the ability to readjust up to that time.
Okay, and on the childcare for all, I kind of agree with Councilor Garlington. I would love to see a fund that you pay direct to the people that are actually feeling those impacts. I know a lot of people are. But I just, I hate spending money on the admin, the, the task force, all of this stuff before it filters down to the people that actually need the help. And I deal with that with the food pantry and with affordable housing stuff. It just, it's horrible. So whatever we can do to get this money into the hands of the people that really need it instead of the bureaucracy. So anybody else had, and you have anything, questions, concerns?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so as, as COVID is waning though, more people that I know in my life have it right now than, than ever been before. Um, as it's waning and the need for that money for rent assistance utilities goes down, I know that it has to stay in that fund, but I as it going into twenty, you know, all the way to twenty twenty-four, um, I feel like the next pandemic is the economic downturn that we sort of seem to be going into. So is that that money, like, does somebody have to ha- have, when they request that money, does it have to be, it's because I specifically wasn't working because of COVID? Or is it, how, how does that work? Is it, I just wasn't working because?
Didn't want to.
Yeah. Or everything's so expensive and you know what I mean? So, yeah, I'm behind in my, my rent. It has to be specific to COVID, correct?
It does, but there's, needless to say, as we all know, there's various reasons that someone may qualify under that, um, whether it be they had to stay home to take care of their children because of
Okay.
no school, whatever it means, there's, there is quite a latitude there.
Has some of that, because that's what I think we're gonna be going into, to where we need to have funds available for for people that, yeah, just for whatever reason, they're just, the inflation of everything is going up and, um, I know I feel it, you know? When I pay my bills. So I was just wondering with that. It's not specific that they've been out with, you know, COVID or their, their company closed for COVID. It's they're taking care of somebody or
It's all evolving.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
So just to summarize, intangible project, would it be safe to say you're giving staff guidance to research at options, maybe either from the Meldron Bar Park site plan that's going to be adopted, the nature park site plan to see if they qualify? I mean, is that, are we looking at parks as a tangible project? Or are there other areas that you would like us to focus on?
That's what I'd like to see.
I think that, um, kids being outside and having a place to go is under-stressed sometimes. Um, especially a safe place to play. I think that, that one of the things that I saw during COVID, unfortunately, was kids wandering around town uh, while their parents were at work and they weren't on their Zoom lessons. And, um, a safe place to play, a safe place to go when mom and dad get home from work or however your family works. Um, I, I just think that that's really important and something that people can see that we use these funds on that is a need in Gladstone. Um, and a, a need in Gladstone has been talked about through these parks for five years now, for ten years now. Um, there's so many of our parks that are outdated, not safe. Um, and I understand that once you walk into a park, it's your responsibility to take responsibility for what happens to you and your family. But that doesn't mean that Gladstone couldn't take some initiative to make our parks and our play areas a better place for the kids. So I don't, I, I would think that ARPA funds could be used for that kind of thing personally. I, cuz they sure reach far and wide for a lot of other things on what they choose to use them on. So I would like to see us do some really good projects out of our parks master plans and site plans with some of this money.
There's also traffic safety sidewalks. We need sidewalks all over, and those gaps have already been identified. Um, I know there's other funds, we could probably get some of that paid for through, but if we could just get a jumpstart on sidewalks, that'd be huge.
Can we not get any streets with that? I know we did a package for the streets and we picked the package and everything, but it's still what I hear every day, and that would be something they could see, hey, Arlington got fixed, you know, and I don't yet.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would get you about ten feet of a street. But it can get you
I'm not sure. We'd have to look at sidewalks too, but we're making a list, we're listening, so.
Yeah, I, I think parks would be great. I think, um, I personally would wanna think outside the box in terms of the section, and it's mostly like sit in the hardest-hit communities and families, you know, the, you know, promoting healthy childhood environments, right? Like we, you know, I don't know if their church is still planning on moving forward with their daycare facility, but we are allowed to provide them with a grant, um, to move, you know, with this ARPA funds to expand the childcare here directly, and that would just be one. I mean, there's others, but you know, I personally would wanna focus on that just sort of the direct dollar amount. Um, and we know that that project is, is happening, you know, I hope it's still happening. Um, that's what I would like to look at, are, are those, those services? And I, I do under, I do fully understand that we need to be mindful that this does end, excuse me, in twenty twenty-four. Um, but, you know, having temporary community health workers, I mean, we've all seen the, the types of increase in abuse in our young children and our families within our schools, but providing those services and helping the school maintain their, you know, multiple counselors that they had, um, or have, um, those sort of kind of health services is sort of where I'm leaning at.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Harkman and seconded by Councilor Garlington to adjourn. Any further questions or concerns? Could you do a roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Councilor Ripley.
Yes.
Councilor Alexander.
Yes.
Councilor Hartman.
Hi.
Councilor Todd.
Yes.
Councilor Garlington.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, meeting's adjourned at six forty-eight PM.